The following program is made possible by First State Bank. Offering secure online and mobile banking, First State Bank is ready to serve your financial needs with locations in Morin, Hermitage, and Hampton. First State Bank, the difference is leadership. Member FDIC, equal housing lender.
Let's get the roll call first. Ms. Clark has told us that we need a roll call so we can go back up. My call there. So Ms. Now.
Okay, Alderman Marshall here. Alderman Frazier here. Alderman Mosley here. Alderman Fraser here. Alderman Burke's here.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor in a second to add to our agenda tonight under page item two. Any questions?
Turn around. Part count and total salary.
Any questions? Okay, all those in favor by a show of hands. It's unanimous. Okay, add that to your agenda, please. Okay, we will move right along to the approval of the minutes.
I know that the minutes be approved with a necessary correction of our district.
Motion in second to approve the minutes. Any discussion?
I have not read this.
Oh, okay.
On page three, under sanitation committee, very well stated, Madam City Clerk, however, there was a motion on the floor, and in order to take that motion off the floor, there was not a second, so the motion died for the lack of a second. Per parliamentary procedure.
Okay. With that correction made to the, or will be made to the minutes, all those in favor by a show of hands? Unanimous, okay. City Clerk's report. You should have a copy of your statements of revenues and expenditures for the month of July on your package. If one has any questions.
Please look for that to report.
Second. Motion in second to approve the statement of revenue and expenditures. Any questions? All those in favor by a show of hands? Unanimous.
And you should also have a July report for your cash balances. In our city sales and use tax for the month of July, we received, the city received seventy-seven thousand, seven hundred and eight dollars and eighteen cents for a year-to-date total of six hundred seventeen thousand, four hundred and four dollars and forty-two cents. And our city taxes were up by ten percent from the same time last year. In our county taxes, we received fifty-four thousand, two hundred and ninety-two dollars and twenty-one cents for a year-to-date total of four hundred twenty thousand, nine hundred eleven dollars and eighty-three cents. And our state taxes were up by eight percent from the same time last year.
But if you will note, please, that they are down there for a month. For the month, so. That's the first time they've been down, I believe, since sometime in 2020, so we need to be aware of that. Okay?
And also, you should have a copy of your July report for the district court.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. My report, real quickly, we have a contract in your package from the South Arkansas Fair Marketing Association for their, the purpose of providing statewide, countywide business, educational, educational and agri expo for the Bradenton Fair. And they are requesting, for that contract, a thousand five hundred dollars.
How much was that?
One thousand five hundred.
Is that what we've always done?
Pretty much so.
We gave everybody else a raise while we came about them, but, I mean, it's mostly involved the kids, then it's educational, and that, yeah.
Is that a motion, sir?
Is that your motion? Is that a motion?
I'll pick that motion.
Make the motion.
I'm second.
Okay, motion in second to approve the contract for two thousand dollars for the Fair and Marketing Association. Any discussion? All those in favor by a show of hands? Any opposed? Okay, that was fine, and then wasn't no vote. I mean, no, no vote, but that's fine.
That's mentioned.
The Alderman now first. Okay, next on the agenda is the strut, the shop, the street shop bid that we put out. We discussed last month, doing some renovations on those two buildings behind the old armory, and moving the street department up there. And we received one bid for the construction, and then we received two bids from the same company for different amounts of foam insulation. You have that in your package.
I was going back to the minutes on page four, on a motion by Alderman Fraser and second by Alderman Henderson, the council voted five to zero to proceed with getting bids and cost for renovating the current shop and cost for moving the department to the old armory. So we already had for the roof on the current building that the employees are in for twelve thousand, what, four hundred dollars or whatever it was, it was a little over twelve thousand dollars. So, okay, so tonight we're looking at, what are we looking at?
The renovation of the two, the one building up behind the old armory, the metal building, and that was to put a, put some garage doors, if you'll look on page two or three of your handouts from G Co. Limited, to add two new doors, a bathroom, reframing and finishing out plumbing of that bathroom, and then a chain link fence to move the existing one back. And that was on the metal building up there behind. And then the other bid is to do foam insulation in that building, so that that's, that's the building they will be housed in. The brick building before you get there will be their shop, and all it needed was like a two hundred dollar roof patch.
And do nothing to the current buil- building?
No, ma'am. We would no longer be using that building.
If we decided to?
Do this.
Do that, do this option.
So we would not be putting the roof on it or going to pay, just letting it deteriorate?
Well, there is, there's interest in it, but we're not ready to move forward with that or present it yet because all the details haven't been worked out, but it would be used.
What do you mean, there's interest in it?
By another city entity.
Oh, okay, okay.
But that, that's, nothing is, I mean, there's just been conversation about it, interest in it. But the city itself, I mean, the street department would not be there. They will take all of their equipment and everything up to the hill.
I just would not like to see something that was donated to the city just deteriorate when we have not spent any dollars to upgrade or to renovate the buildings, any of those buildings, to remove the armory itself.
We do have another, we would have another option if this one, that conversation has been started on, does not pan out.
Could we give it to the water company, consistent in that area?
If they wanted it. I mean, that'll be up to y'all, but at this point in time, we need to make the decision if we're going to move forward with the buildings up on the hill.
I'd make a motion that we, we have to decide whether we want to go with one inch of foam or an inch and a half of foam, but I think that we need to accept this bid and go to move them, like you said, on the hill.
My second.
But I guess we need to decide which, we need to decide.
What are you voting on? I mean, you're voting, what was your motion?
Why don't you break them up and make a motion on accepting the bid one, and then, then, okay.
I make a motion that we accept the bid to redo the building for the thirty-four thousand, one forty-four eighty.
There's a motion in second to accept the bid to renovate the metal building for thirty-four thousand, one forty-four eighty. Any discussion?
Have we discussed this fully to the extent that we know exactly what we're doing?
We discussed it in an agenda meeting, and the street, Ms. Mosley has met with the street department.
Well, this is my first hearing of that, so. And I wasn't there, and I didn't intend to be there, so, you know, no problem.
Well, actually, this information was emailed to us, and we did not have.
Well, I'm not going to load my computer up well.
No, 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 I was just saying, we didn't have that.
We didn't have the bids at, at agenda meeting, but we did talk about the repairs, and then we talked about it, and, well, we brought it all up, about the things that the same, street department had a meeting, and we did go and look at both buildings and up on the hill and everything to see what the current situation was.
You said the street department or the street committee?
The street committee, I'm sorry.
Okay. And it was a committee of one?
Yes.
From the agenda meeting. Okay, okay, and just for, I guess maybe my clarity, the thirty-four thousand, one hundred, twenty-four dollars and eighty cent consists of what?
It consists of putting two overhead doors with framing and frame, framing out a eight-by-ten bathroom, and finishing it with sheet rock and coverings, and then the plumbing for that bathroom is the eight thousand, eight hundred bid. It's all broken down, and it's overall bid. And then we need to move the chain link fence to extend the enclosure right there behind that, that building, so that it would be more secure, and that's the sixty, six thousand, five forty-four. It's broken down on page three.
I know originally, when the armory donated the property to the city, both of those buildings were anticipated upon being community-oriented for the, for the public to actually use. And where we currently are, that was going to, going to be the shop, but then what I'm hearing now is the shop where they currently are is not feasible for them to continue to work in that particular area, is that correct?
Not under the current condition that that shop is in.
And the, just putting the roof on it, that twelve thousand, four hundred dollars or whatever that roof is, that would not suffice getting that particular building up to snuff for the employees?
No, ma'am. There needs to be additional renovations inside that shop building, because it has no, it has no air in it, so they have no place to cool off in the summertime like this, so we would have to go in and probably frame out and make some other adjustments.
Do we have those projections as to what it would cost as to where we currently?
We did, we did not pursue that. So there's a motion on the floor in a second, and call for a vote. All those in favor by a show of hands? Okay, that's three. All those opposed?
I'm going, I'm going to vote for it.
Okay, so there's four, and all those opposed, show of hands, there's two against, and four, four.
But I wouldn't like, I wouldn't like to go on record stating that we should look at not letting the building, the current building deteriorate, or if whatever the surprise is that you're going to share with us, has just not panned out.
Okay. I mean, I'm just not liberty, because?
Yeah, I don't need to know, but I just, I just want to go on record saying that it was donated to the city, we should at least keep it onable, and it should not just deteriorate like.
It's too visible.
Yes, yes. It's in our city park.
Yes, ma'am. We, we, we're working on something there, and we will let you know as soon as, as we are able to. I don't want to get, I don't want to get one thing ahead of the other. Okay, now then, let's go to the phone.
Okay. We need to, I guess, make a motion to put one eigh- inch of foam inside the metal building.
And, and your rationale according with one inch versus the one and one-half inch?
That was probably, I mean, looking at it, probably one inch would do. One and a half, of course, would just make it better. We just need to decide which one of those we want to go with.
I think if we went with an inch and a half, we'd make it up in utility bills.
I think so.
The difference in the nine, twelve.
I think probably.
Okay, do.
The contractor.
So let's make a motion that we do an inch and a half of spray in the metal building.
My second. Okay, motion on, in second, to do one and a half inch of insulation on the metal building. All those in, any discussion? All those in favor by a show of hands? It's unanimous. Okay. That is all I have on my agenda. So now, ready for public comments? We have two that have signed in.
And I would also like to be recognized.
Okay, you may go ahead. Come on, speak first. Okay.
I will.
I'll be too long.
Oh, shut up.
I don't like a long session.
First of all, to Mayor Pennington, to our city clerk Roswell, to our city attorney, Clay, to our alderman, and to our senior alderman, Alderman Burke, everyone in attendance. Please allow me first just to thank the citizens of Ward Three for allowing me the opportunity to serve as alderman. It has really been an honor and a privilege for me. I have been blessed to have served as vice president of the Arkansas Municipal League. I have had the opportunity of serving for fourteen years on the executive committee. I have served for fourteen-plus years on the advisory committee, and my peers, the city council, have also recognized me with a resolution when I received the commitment of excellent award, and I don't take that lightly. I say thank you. I come before you this evening just to share some information, information that you can utilize and refer back to. The booklet that you have is the guidebook for municipal officials, mayor, council, cities. And if you would allow me, know Alderman Burke's, I am not going to read all twenty-one pages. However, I am going to reference various chapters and pages within the document. The table of contents is just what it says. It gives us an overview of the Arkansas Municipal League government. It gives us the duties of the mayor. It gives us the duties of the council members, as well as the budgeting process, freedom of information, and the functions of the Arkansas Municipal League, of which we take part in. Our mayor, our council members, our department heads, all have responsibilities, and all of those are governed by law. If you will go with me to chapter one, which gives an overview of the Arkansas Municipal Government. It gives us guidelines that have been established through the Arkansas Constitution, and it was actually, there were statutes that were actually passed. If you will go with me to page seven, we are considered still a first-class city, and the duties of the mayor is stated on page seven. The mayor of the city is the principal officer of all Arkansas cities and towns within the mayor council form of government, and that is what we actually are. When you look at the duties, the functions, if you would just look under the legislative duties of the mayor, it actually spells out what those duties are. When you turn to page eight, under the administrative duties of the mayor, which is the day-to-day operation, if you would look at the last bullet point under administrative duties of the mayor, it states that the mayor oversees the day-to-day activities of the city and supervises department heads. The mayor's duties of appointment, nominations, and removals. The mayor has the authority of recommending the building officials. However, all of those commissions, all of those, even department heads, comes back to the city, and if the council does not agree with the mayor, but hopefully there is a smooth teamwork approach, two-thirds of a vote can be done by the city council to overturn the mayor's decision. Just as if an ordinance is vetoed, or a resolution is vetoed, two-thirds of the city council can also overturn that decision. If you will look on page nine, it gives the actual, I call it flowchart, from the voters all the way down to the city clerk, the treasurer, the mayor, the council members, the city attorney, and department heads. If you will turn with me to page ten, it talks about us, the city council, how we are to proceed. The council rules our procedure and different types of meetings. What we are in right now is our regular city council meeting. What we was in on Thursday was just what it was called, the agenda meeting, to set the agenda for today. If you would just look, I'm not going to read all of those, but it will give you definitions of each one of the type of meetings that we have in our city government, the different types of meeting. When you go over to chapter three, it talks about how to pass an ordinance, how to pass a resolution, and it spells you out the gadas, the directions, and everything that you need to know is there. Also, if you'll go down to the, next to the last paragraph on page eleven, if an ordinance is passed with a valid emergency clause, it will take effect immediately, and that is the reason for an emergency clause, so that you want the actions to immediately take, to take effect. However, if you do not pass the emergency clause, then you will have to wait until the next meeting in order to, and, and you would not have your emergency situation taken care of. But it spells all of that out on page eleven. When you turn with me to page twelve, it talks about personnel issues, and I want to thank Teresa Sandine, who gave me a copy, I guess a year ago. The personnel policies have actually, may or not, been updated according to this since December of 2018. Any personnel actions are approved by the city council, but this is the guidelines that employees are to use, this is the guidelines that department heads are to use, and the reviewing official for the department heads is our mayor. If you would look with me under establishing personnel policies, it spells it out for you, it talks about the handbook, each of our employees should actually have a handbook of the, of the city. This handbook that I asked Ms. Sandine in one of our Ways and Means Committee meeting for, each employee should have this, in fact, they should, according to the Municipal League Handbook of Personnels for Cities, it says that they really should sign off on it. The actual evaluation of the employees, the disciplinaries, et cetera, is done by their immediate supervisor. If there are any grievances, or anyone would like to appeal, then that appeal would go to the mayor. However, the city council is the governing body, and it can come to us, however, you should go through the full process, just as it's stated under hiring. Say, for example, the mayor hired me as dog catcher, and the council decide, oh, no, that wasn't a good choice. Two-thirds of the vote, and I'm out of there, you know, so. If you will look on page fourteen, it talks about the budgeting process, it gives us the time period when the mayor is supposed to get it to the city council, and it gives the council February one to make sure that we get it, get the budget passed. Now, on page fifteen, the bidding process, and Alderman Fraser asked a question at the agenda meeting. If you would look at the last paragraph on page fifteen, "In an emergency situation where the bidding procedure may not be feasible or practical, the governing body by resolution may waive the requirements of competitive bidding." So, very simple. We could already have something in place, or we could do it as a one-time. On page sixteen, professional services, it also talks about competitive bids that are allowed when the city seeks certain professional services. It talks about the RMP, et cetera. Now, on page seventeen, freedom of information. Anyone can request freedom of information documents, public records, open meetings, even from the executive session. If we were to go into executive session, first of all, the mayor would put the regular council meeting at recess, and then we would go into executive session, take care of whatever it is, and I will talk about executive session in a second, and then after whatever action that is taken, the mayor will come back, reconvene the city council meeting, and share the results of the executive session. It could be no actions taken, or whatever the situation is. Now, if you would, look on page seventeen, under executive session. "The only time the city council may meet and exclude the media and the public in an executive session. Executive sessions are permitted only for the purpose of considering employment, promotions, demotion, disciplinary action, or resignation of any public officer or employee." demotion, disciplinary action, or resignation of any public officer or employee. In addition, an executive session is authorized for the discussion of public water system security measures in accordance to," and it gives those numbers. Very important. "Actions discussed in executive session become legal only after the city council for the other governing body ratifies the action with a public vote in open session." So although the discussion was in executive session, you're going to do your vote in public. The example of going into executive session with a motion. We are going into executive session to discuss the discipline of an employee. You do not have to state the employee's name publicly, however, unless the city attorney is being considered for employment, appointment, promotion, demotion, disciplinary action, then he or she may not meet an executive session with the mayor and the city council. Likewise, the city clerk, city recorder, or town recorder should not be in executive session. So, also, within your handout, I did provide to you from the handbook of the Arkansas cities and towns, the actual prohibited, our employees have rights, our department heads have rights, our mayor, who is our administrator, also have rights, and we have rights as the city council. This tells us the conduct that we should conduct ourselves, that we should definitely not discriminate, and I wanted to copy it from the handbook, because the second handout that I have for you is that of what our Personnel Policy Manual that has not been amended since December of 2018 says. So the second handout tells you that we are an equal opportunity employer, that we don't discriminate if the person is handicapped, or whatever their race are, and there is a procedure for complaints, reporting, and investigation. The first investigation is that of the supervisor, and then the reviewing official is the mayor. When the person goes through that full, it tells you here in your personnel policy, it gives all of the guidelines as to what one should do. My last comment, and thank you for listening to me, is that of Robert's Rules. I'm in school again to become a certified parliamentarian. However, I have done a number of parliamentarian procedure workshops, and I just made a copy, and anyone that would like one of my book lists, I would be more than happy to share it with you. I started out, in your handout, you will find, it starts out on Page Nine, it gives you the types of motions, it also gives you the proper way to make a motion, and if you follow those procedures, all of this is out of Robert's Rules and the Twenty, I mean, the Twelfth Edition. So I just wanted to share that with you. Again, I want to thank the citizens of Fort Free, who have been very kind to me, I have enjoyed working with each of you, my peers, and with the administration. Thank you.
Mr. Reed, you need to tell our folks when we go to municipal league meetings, they need to pay attention instead, you know? They need to pay attention and not be partying.
I'm sorry?
I said, our council members, when we go to these municipal league meetings, we need to pay attention to what you went over, and not be partying.
Okay, we do have two that have signed in to speak. The first one is Ms. Irma Brunson, if you would like to come forward, Ms. Brunson?
I'll just leave her right here.
Okay, that is fine.
I'm Irma Brunson, and I live at 319 Park Lane, and I stood to speak about the ditch on the side of our property that's overflowing. When it rained, I called and spoke to the street people about it, but I just wanted to make sure that my name is on the list. I understand that there's a waiting list, so I want to make sure that my name is on it, because that ditch has gotten worse now, and it's so bad now that it's flowing into my front yard. It started in the back, and that's all the way in the front. And I have been living there for like twenty years, and that ditch has not been attended at all. I have been paying to have somebody to come and clean it up, but now it's kind of hard to find somebody to do that work. But anyway, I would just like to make mention that I would like to have that done.
All right, thank you, and you've written that clearly on my phone, so we will get it to the straight department.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. All right, the next one is Latanza Atkins.
If that's fine, Mayor Pennington, we can stand right here as well?
That is fine.
All right. Good evening, Mayor Pennington and Councilmember, my name is Latanza Atkins, this is my mother, my mother Gwendolyn Mitten, and we reside at 516 North Myrtle Street, and my mother is coming to make a public and formal complaint about the two properties to the left and the right of her. I guess it'd be 514 and 518. Both properties are vacant and unkept, and so we are concerned that that causes infestation. Not only is it a eyesore, because we're right here on Myrtle Street, I'm glad to hear that we're talking about maintaining and keeping our city beautiful. Also, the lot that's across the street as well, mother called, and thank you Mayor Pennington for making sure that it gets, or Mrs. Zach for making sure that it gets, taking care of what she calls, but those properties have been unkept and vacant for quite a while, and so our recommendation that they, I don't know what the proper procedure for condemning and excavating, but that's what we would love to see. And since we have a floor, we'll talk about Blakey Ship Court as well, and I understand that free, I mean, affordable housing is a serious issue, not just in the nation, but clearly here in Warren, and that property is an abomination for any human to live in, it's dilapidated, it's unkept, and I do not know what the procedure is, but I feel confident these folks are paying rent, so I'm sure there is some type of landlord cause, so I wanted to go on public record also complaining about that as well. So thank you for your time and consideration in these matters.
Okay, thank you very much, and I've got yours written down, and so we will, we'll be looking into both of them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So you're getting a super base, you're too well.
Okay, now then, we'll move on to our committee reports, we have the police chief.
Once again, we found ourselves, you have a hunt report in front of you, there are some corrections to it that we have to address, as you're noticing our personnel section, that we hired three individuals a couple weeks ago, so that put us at full staff for about forty-eight hours. We also, during that same time span when the three were hired, we had two to resign, well, one and a half to resign, I say one and a half because one has asked to maintain and stay on as a, as a part-time police officer for us. So basically, we're still maintaining our status of being one and a half officers short. Yes, ma'am.
What are they putting on their exit form?
Can I discuss that in person?
Sure.
Well, basically, one of them went to a...
We can talk about it later.
...
I may have a follow-up question.
Okay, all right. But both, both sought employment elsewhere, not at a police department.
We know this, we know it's a continuous situation where you get officers to come, and the pay is better someplace else, and these type things are steady going, and I wouldn't doubt that we will continue to have that problem as time passes on, if we don't do anything about it.
Water and burps were also, it's not only, in the past, we were competing with other police departments, now we're competing with other employers, period. The job market out there is rampant, and people are paying a different amount of money for different type jobs, so it's not only just the police field that we're competing against, we're competing against truck drivers and things of that nature, so yes, it is, it's a...
There are always bonuses.
Right, exactly, yes, sir, yes, sir. But we are in the competitive with this, as far as the police pay, we are, we are right there with everyone, it's not, not our pay, it's just basically the job market.
Do you have a new officer that would be detective?
No, sir, we don't, no, sir. As a matter of fact, they all started, as of today, two started today, yes, sir, so...
Two things, Chief.
Yes, sir.
First of all, I'm probably going to shock you, because the first thing, it kind of shocked me, and I wish we'd get more of it from our citizens. One of your officers was complimenting on the way he hounded himself when he made a traffic stop.
Yes.
He was real professional, he let the person know who he was, the reason why he stopped him, and he said he didn't even feel threatened, because, you know, on most national TV stations, you feel like first thing an officer do is put his hand on his weapon. He said he kept his hand in a non-threatening area, and he said he was refreshed at how well that your officer hounded himself, so kudos goes out to you and y'all training, or whatever you're doing to make that effect on our community, because you may not believe it, but people are looking to complain. And then when we had to turn around, and you get somebody asking to bring something good forward, I just don't want to let this opportunity pass by to give you and your officers kudos for a great job that they're doing, even though some people don't think that we're doing a great job, other people see the things and progress that you're doing, and I want to appreciate it as a council member, because sometimes I go to the grocery store, I get chewed up pretty bad, but this, this time it was a refreshing thing to see. And number two, you know, since the State Highway Department made their flow evaluation of the school system, now that since we've moved those new buildings over there, I'm personally concerned, because some of our citizens get into the habit of doing one certain thing, and since they changed the egress and the access and the exits in that area, which is one of the main thoroughfares, and the business thoroughfare there, I would appreciate it both as a parent and as a council member, if we can do anything we could to help aid that change.
Yes, sir, as a matter of fact, we've already have been addressing that issue, we're going to kind of, I'm going to use the term flood, the, that particular area to get the traffic flow going, to get people used to that, that new normal, so we're going to have quite a few officers over there to make sure we get that traffic flow situated over there to support the changes coming, so it comes through here.
Thank you.
Can you really increase the police presence in and around Main Street, the back alleys? I hear a lot of different complaints, especially with me, you know, working up on Main Street, and I've never seen Main Street like it is right now, with the individuals that we have, so especially even like the businesses making sure, you know, a lot of us, some people don't have alarms and cameras, you know?
Right.
Making sure the doors are locked.
Right.
And spaces in the back alley.
Right.
Around the blessing box.
Okay.
And I appreciate that, and we have a lot of, it's a lot of foot traffic.
Right.
And it's a problem, like you said, Warren, it's everywhere, that we've really got to start trying to get a handle on. Okay, Police Committee, Alderman Fraser, do you have something to bring for us?
The purchase of a new vehicle, the one, we found out that, and we talked about it in a gentleman, that the cars, the Ford, or the company never picked up the orders, right? So, we found a Durango, a 2021 Durango, it's black, that, are you still able to get that chance?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so we can, we can get that vehicle, we need to decide on if we want that vehicle and for the police department, and then also, I'd like to move, Ms. Henderson just talked about it, if we come up on another car or truck that the chief thinks is, I mean, that's fits the needs of what he needs, the police department, that he, he can purchase that, or we can do a phone call and get that where we don't have to wait a week to set up a meeting to, or wait till another council meeting to get approval to buy the vehicle. Would, I don't know.
Let's make two motions, let's make a motion to, to purchase the vehicle that is before you, and the addition, additional work that will have to be added to it, you've got all that in your packet, let's go forward with that one, first, if you'll move that.
So I move that we purchase the 2021 Dodge Durango, and then at 28, 850, and then to bring it to, get the, everything that the police needs, we add that in there, along with the striping and the radios, and everything, the lights, everything that needs to be put on it.
There's a motion on the floor to purchase the vehicle that you have in your packet.
Second.
Motion, second, is there any discussion? All those in favor, by a show of hands, you now. Okay, now then, the second motion, if they would purchase.
A second one, if, when we find it, when it's found.
I'd have to move forward with purchasing.
Okay, so...
Give him the authorization.
Right, so I make a motion, I move that we give Chief Hildreth the ability to move forward with buying another vehicle when one becomes available.
Second.
Motion in second to move forward with buying another vehicle should we come across one. Any discussion? All those in favor, by a show of hands, you now. Okay. Yes, yes. Okay, if there's nothing else, then Chief, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, now then, Fire Chief, lower.
Good evening. Good evening. The Warren Fire Department responded to ten calls during the month of July, none were told out because the entire department had a monthly meeting on July the 11th with 23 members present, and the volunteer payroll for the month was $765. In training that night, we burned the house at 305 Watts Street, and we used that for some pump training on the new truck, as well as some hose training. We are in the process of trying to become a firewise community that's a trend through the Forest Commission. We received $1,000 to start with, two chainsaw, that you'd say four rakes, not rake, and four chuggles so far, eventually we've come up. Once we get, complete the end of the program, we'll get an additional $2,500. So, that's all I have, we've had an uneven for one month of July.
You haven't done the Alderman toll free?
No, I don't, are we still on the fire burn man?
No, sir.
Thank you.
Burn man.
We get that posted as soon as we get an authorization from the county, and then it gets out in the news, and Facebook, and radio, and of course, county takes care of that, but we take care of getting it out home, it's in the news. Okay, thank you, sir. Mr. Johnson?
I got a call in the hall.
Sanitation, the report first?
We're running two trucks right now because the weather still remains above ninety degrees, so we're getting a little break, getting a little complaints on it because we're not having trash out on time, but that's okay, it's working out. People get used to, garbage truck come by at ten, so that's when they put the trash out, which y'all heard that before, but they're learning, we're getting, no word on the new truck right now, I'm going to say that, so, that outweigh.
How do you handle it when you get an individual who habitually don't have their trash out on times, and they call the department, and they want the trucks to come back to put their...
Nine out of ten times, we go back. Especially to the person that says, I didn't have it out on time, I didn't have it out by seven, uh, we definitely go back. Uh, there are some, like you said a bit before, that, that are always calling, but it's just easier to go back by there. Usually the same day we'll go back unless they wait till three o'clock in the afternoon, when they get home at four, or cause they might trash get picked up because all the guys are going, going home by then, so. But we, we're doing, they're doing a great job, I mean, they do the best they can, but, uh, that's the way, that's the way we do, we do go back.
They do an excellent job, we never hear complaints about folks' employees.
I'm glad you don't.
I don't hear any complaints.
I'm glad you don't. But no, they do do a good job, and I brag on them all the time, but.
And we have some new employees, I wanna say that too, it's, uh, we had quite a few applications for those positions, so.
Yeah, we got some new ones.
We do have some new ones.
Why do you have some new ones? Do you have someone that quit?
Uh, we had somebody quit, somebody got fired.
Okay.
All right, let's move to the building officials report, uh, monthly report on. We got that, uh.
One of these Clark on Church and Rock Street, the lot that's right across from the baseball field. I believe Charlie Watt was the person that was keeping it out, it has grown up again.
Okay.
Is that on your list, anywhere?
No, ma'am, nobody's called in on it.
Okay, so do I need to fill out a report on her behalf, or can I give it to you at this meeting?
Uh, you can give it at this meeting right now, because it's, it's known now that you've said.
Okay, thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am.
You know what I'm talking about?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Sure do.
She has a beautiful home and yard and, um, and it, it, nothing has been done this year.
Okay.
But she said she thought that the individual, uh, taking care of it was safe, is the reason that it has not been done.
I'll take care of it.
He is sick, Joel?
Yes, he is, he is.
Oh, my, oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. I didn't, Church and Rock, Miss?
Uh, Church and Rock, uh. Right across from the baseball field.
I like to make notes on that one, okay.
Before you get to the railroad track.
Before you get to the railroad track.
Been doing it spaces at school, getting ready for them, uh, having a little trouble with electrical, hopefully we'll get everybody together, get everybody on the same page, uh. Going as fast as possible, I believe, Baker doing a, also doing a good job. Uh, I was talking to the lady that made the complaint on Lakeview Court, um, they got sent a letter last Thursday, and, uh, they were in the process today of starting to clean it up and bring everything up to code they have till September the first, uh, bring everything in place.
And those little houses?
Yes, ma'am. Finally got, finally got housing free cleaned up, all of that out of the way, all the boats out of town, those are camped. A lot of people happy that they were there. Well, we'll, we'll see.
So that we have to have someone to do that?
No, ma'am, you guys do that. No, ma'am, we didn't, we just, we talked our way into it, so.
We, it's not a we, it's a he, I mean, I'm gonna give credit where credit is due.
Well, I mean, they, a lot of cooperation went on and, and, uh.
From the owner?
From the owner, yeah, from both owners, and, uh, reasoning and just talking, just neighbors getting involved, nowhere along with me and, and, uh.
So the neighbors changed their mind and they wanted it done?
Yes, ma'am, they did. They did, uh, and the lady that, that I told y'all, jumped up there on her bandwagon, also came to me and apologized. Uh, she was just thought the city was picking until she really realized how bad it was, and, uh, but we've got a lot of places in town in that shape that we're, we're trying to, trying to clean up with sides, uh, trying to entice people to clean up their own stuff, but it's just slow, it's slow.
Okay, anything else? Thank you, sir. All right, street, uh, Mr. Harnsberger?
Good evening.
Good evening.
We spent most of this, uh, a lot of time here, luckily, I don't know, it's, uh, heat in the Cook Street, and we've had to replace coves and, uh, clean some ditches out to straighten up the drainage issues that we've been having there. It's, uh, take a little more time than what we planned on, uh, but we just about see the light, it tends to tunnel on it, you know? So, that's mainly been my focus, uh, this past month or so, is getting that done. Uh, we're gonna get started on the, or we are started on getting the bush hogging done around, get the grass cut, stuff like that, and filling up potholes also, but, uh, it's just so much you can do.
So, uh, may I ask what procedure you use on potholes? How do you determine what street that you're going to fix as it relates potholes?
Only, uh, we have a complaint form, and whenever someone, uh, call in and complains about it, we go, uh, uh, fix those, those potholes, or try our best to, it may not be that day, but as soon as we can get the material and, and have the time, we go do it. And, uh, you know, we just, by the time we ride the streets, we see them and we just fix them before they actually come a complaint form.
Did you have a beautiful plane, I had somebody call me and was asking about a concern with Chip and Neil Wood Street, I was back up in here, behind, um, yeah, behind Oliver Janet.
I've got a, uh, a form about the bush hogging.
Well, this is not the, the street, the holes in the street, the pothole?
I have not, that I'm, that I'm aware of, I have not got that.
To be put on the list, so.
As far as I know, I have not got that complaint form yet, I did not, I was not aware of it, uh, dinner, I think, I have got some about the, the bush hogging and, uh, the ditch name, but we will address that issue.
Okay, uh, Alderman Mosley, would you like to discuss the tractor issue?
Okay. We've had problems with tractors, and we have, we're not building these schools. Lord, will not come to me, anybody advertise?
Beds.
Every time it's bid for a tractor, and those bids would be open, uh, August, uh.
They got released to the papers, they should be running this way.
Yeah, they should be in the, that form right now, they have been released, and I think it's like mid-August or so that we will have bids that's been issued, so hopefully we can get something that's feasible for us.
And if, if we may have to have a special call meeting, uh, after those bids, or, after we've had the bid opening, because we're kind of in a, in a dire need, uh, this tractor, so.
In a bind.
Be ready, if, if we can get a form out here.
Yeah, that's, um.
Still available?
Yes, yes, it will, yes. So. It is mid, uh, August, so we'll try to get that taken care of so we can get back to full speed, full, uh, have all our quick.
Zero.
Okay. All right, thank you.
And we're not gonna talk about streets, well, Street, uh, by me some, street? Would you?
I have a, this department head, do you have a listing of streets?
Right.
Uh, normally, historically, the procedure has been that there's a tour of the streets in Ward one, two, and three, all of our wards, and then the committee, uh, compiles, and then the department head also have, uh, streets, and then each of the Aldamans within our respective, uh, wards, uh, also share. Uh, I was told by Alderman Mosley that there was no leftover list. The nation was going to come to meeting that we had.
And the public hearing?
Yes, the public hearing that we had, those really ones that came with complaints on the street.
You had a complaint, Mayor?
Yeah, well, my neighbors did, it wasn't me, I did sign their petition when they brought it, but, uh,
uh, it, it was, it was neighborhood led.
Okay, at our meeting, you referenced just this street? At our meet, at our.
Well, we just talked about that one, but these, these are the streets, this, this is how many attended the meeting and turned their streets in, that they would like to have them fixed, paid, so.
I do believe that the street chairman and the street, uh, department head have made one swing around the streets, but, uh, if the whole council would like to get together sometime, or go look.
I already have a listing of about fifteen streets within Ward, uh, three, uh, that I can type up and, 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 uh, give to you, but normally that is asked at one of these settings, and we give you, you know, the chair of the information, but I can do it however you would like for me to do it, just.
You may just type it up.
Type it up, and anybody else has a listing?
And then I have a question by one of my constituents, uh, relating, what plan of action do we have for the brick streets? Because they're in that shape. I mean, do we, I mean, are we gonna do anything, are we considering the brick streets?
Not at this, not at this time that I know of now, if it's like that, I don't.
Do you have any information relating, uh?
We didn't, there is no master plan, if that's what you're asking, there is one particular place that, um, that, that we're very much aware that something needs to be done.
It's more than one particular place.
Well, this one is probably the worst.
It is the worst, I know the one that you're referencing, it is.
And, um, I mean, we'll, we'll have to bring in some, uh, specialists.
There's historians that come in, is that the way it works?
See, all the black folks, they did, those streets are gone.
Um, these, the streets are on the historical register, um, and there are companies that can come in and take them up, and what we're gonna find when we get underneath there, who knows? And, and, I mean, I, that's something that probably needs to be dealt with in the very, in the future, in the coming years, on, uh, looking at, especially the worst.
The committee had looked at that, was that one of your items that you?
I mean, no one, no one has ever made a, since I've been mayor, no one has ever made a formal complaint on those streets. It, and, uh, informal, uh, maybe, but not, the one place I'm particularly speaking of is, uh, it was a, a conversation. But yes, there does, there does need, you need to sit down within the years to come and figure out how to address it.
There should be a plan of action in place.
You can address it if you're listening.
There may be some historical dollars somewhere to preserve or to do something since they are historical.
I, I've not had much luck finding that money, uh, and I don't, I know when the, uh, when the gas company was, was in town, and we knew that they had specific areas that they were gonna take up very few bricks, and I talked to historical preservation at that time, and I was told that they, they can't govern in it, but they can, like, they would be able to come back and look at how they put it back together and make sure it was okay. But that, for the one spot that they did have to remove some bricks, they called in professionals to, uh, put them back down, and, and Mr. Harnsberger was kinda over, I mean, he was watching everything they did, and you, I don't even notice it now. I mean, I know where it is, but I don't notice it, but that was, uh, kind of a touch and go. But they, they, I mean, I asked him, I said, would you come down and watch, and they said, we don't have, we don't have the authority to do that, but we will, you know, give you any guidance and, uh, assistance like that, but we didn't run into any major problems at that time. But, uh, you know, we can add that to the street committee's agenda for the coming years, if, uh, maybe next, next year, whenever you sit down to have the street committee meeting, then you take that into consideration.
Yes.
Okay, anything else? Community, Neighborhood Development Committee?
I'll be putting together a meeting pretty soon, I'll probably see what's available, who kind of scheduled. At our agenda meeting, I had asked about, um, some different things that I, people was asking me about, and just different things hearing about over town, as far as businesses and things like that, and I asked the mayor if she, you know, knew or heard of it, and, um, she didn't at the time, and she told me to ask the person, you know, that, um, had the building, that owned the building, you know? And so, and I did, I called and I talked to that individual, so I got the answer that I needed, and so, pretty soon, hopefully, we're gonna have some answers to those, concerns, which is good, so, so I always try to ask and find out, and then go in the right direction to get the right answer, so.
Okay, thank you very much.
Well, uh, the, the Hibachi Grill on, uh, North Main, uh, his name is Tierra, and, uh, he's already said that he's having problems finding help because, uh, his business is kinda thriving. Yeah, and he said he's originally from Indonesia, and he's coming here from Ben, and he would like to expand and stay here a little longer, but, uh, number one thing he needs is some help.
Universal issue.
Any food is good.
Yeah, we try, they ran that for a contest.
Okay, Ways and Means Committee, Alderman Henderson?
I don't have a, a committee, uh, report, however, if you'll remember from our last council meeting, uh, which was in the month of July, our financial update was giving us the midpoint as to where we were. Uh, however, we will be scheduling, uh, a meeting, I will be getting with the other two committee members, we just like for all of our members to be in attendance when we meet, because it's such an important, um, committee and, uh, process to prepare the, uh, budget with, along with the administration. Uh, some of you, as Aldaman, have already given me some items that you would like to see this committee to review. I did pass those on, and we will certainly, um, review them whenever our committee meets. Uh, we did amend the agenda, adding number two under K, uh, as you are aware, we did authorize, uh, to hire a part-time person uh, out at the shooting range, and the mayor and administration advertise, and applications are in, and, but we could not set a hourly rate for the, whomever the advertising, uh, that's want to be successful, so. I move that, in looking at our pay scale, that the part-time employee when hired, be paid twelve dollars per hour.
A second. Motion in second, uh, to set the hourly rate for the part-time shooting range employee at twelve dollars.
How many, how many hours a week I was gonna?
Part-time is anything, uh.
Twenty.
Yeah, right.
Twenty.
They can't go over twenty.
Twenty hours.
And, and the range is open from one to five, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday.
As I mentioned years and years ago about how, you know, who's, who all is involved in that, and nobody's ever given me a clear answer, I have no problem with the range, but I just think it should be these other, uh, young men that's out here getting involved.
And they are, and we will start.
Well, nobody told us.
We will start, uh.
We will start now, when?
Well, actually, he's already started, but we'll start getting you a report of, of the, uh, the, the, the individuals. Of course, it's kinda slow right now because it's extremely hot, and people are not going out there, but, uh, it is in use, and we know that this file will be used more, but I'll request that we, um, collect that data. But I'll request that we, uh, collect that data just for you.
Okay, that'd be fun.
That ends my report.
All right, thank you ma'am.
We did...
I'm sorry, we did not vote, we did not vote.
I know we got a second.
We got a second. Uh, motion in second and to, for the hourly, hourly rate to be twelve dollars, all those in favor, by show of hands? Okay, unanimous. All right, Mr. Wagner is not here tonight. He is attending some meetings with, uh, the Monticello, uh, Sports and, uh, another sports meeting, so I excused him. Uh, planning commission, you've got, they have no meeting. No aviation committee meeting. You've got the minutes for the water and sewer commission and no meeting for, uh, housing authority. Cultural Center, we, uh, we got the report, um, in your packet. Do you have anything to add, Oliver, prior to? Okay, is there any unfinished business? Uh, any public statements? No one else signed either? I do want to recognize, um, Ms. Lee, she did come, she's here, and she has filled out her complaint form and it will be dealt with. So, I, I want you to know that, that we, we hear ya.
I appreciate it.
Yes ma'am. Uh, is there any new business? I don't have any announcements at this time except for school starts next Monday, so y'all be watching when you drive down, uh, Martin Street and Bradley Road, if you're going out that way, be careful. Uh, I need a motion to pay...
I got an announcement if you don't care.
Okay, I sure.
Well, first of all, uh, getting back to Alderman Henderson's point about the city property. And, uh, when, uh, I was approached by the people about the building down in Park. And, uh, they reminded me that when we was deeded that from the National Guard, when they got to those things, that we had said that we was gonna do community-minded things there. And so I just wondered how many properties did we actually have that the city owned that people do not know about? And the majority of those are indissoluble and need attention. And, uh, if we could kind of get together and just take them one at a time and go along and do something to them before they get into the shape where they can be uninsured or be damaged. Because we don't want them to be like the old West Brothers building. And the longer you wait, the more they get out of there. And so if we're gonna be having other people out in the community fix their properties, I think we ought to take the forefront on it. And you know, and I just wanted to think back when, uh, I come on with the chamber and, uh, one thing I promised that we would fix the old train station because some of the older people around here was really interested in it and it was a deployable shit. And, uh, when I first got started, that I started out with Emily over there at the courthouse and getting all the particulars and everything and getting who's interested, who owned it. She told me a few things, getting around some, some of the monies that we were paying and that kind of information. Then I also remember Greg, when he was getting involved in that, when we was looking for grants and going to Little Rock. And then I also remember Southeast Arkansas Economic Development District did a great service to us to get those grants started. And as I saw the thing take off and people really taking interest in it and seeing it being a steakhouse and everything else around the world, you know, I just wondered when I had that idea that would the chamber of commerce be able to keep it up and take it on? And I was entrusted in the city council when I brought it up to them to go ahead on and deed it over to the city. You know, and that was one of the other properties that I don't want us just to look over because I think we owe it to the chamber of commerce more so than we owe it to anybody else because they did it over to the city. And so when people trust you with things, I think you have an obligation to go along and keep pushing those things forward. Over, Saturday before last, we had, uh, Mr. and Mrs. Kevin Williams here with plays for the Minnesota Vikings. And, uh, when I was asked about the building, I mean, I was asked about some locations and I told them about the train station. And they weren't aware that the train station was open for those type situations. And Mr. Williams told me that that was one of the greatest things that he had seen in South Arkansas and they really enjoyed themselves. Because it was raining at the time and it was just comfortable and it was just something that we could build on and made me feel good that we actually did that. So we have plenty of those properties like that and I just wish we could keep getting other people involved. Because I've never been able to do anything without the help of, just like the group of people I've just named up, to do things like that. Because everybody don't know everything, but some people know some things. And moving around all along, the hospital had a series of meetings and, uh, the one that was, uh, able to be there. And you know, they had to hold these meetings so they can get the grants and get their monies and things. And then they did a survey and I was just appalled by the survey. Did you not know that not anyone in the city or the county knew that we had an OBD up? And we do. Right on staff, right there at the Bradley County Rural Clinic. You know, just so many things that we have, if not misinformation, we don't have the information vehicle to get it out there. I don't know what we do if we have finger of a pumpkin eagle, but still we are missing the point on that. And there's so many people that are going without medical attention, waiting two weeks according to the survey or even longer. Just because they don't know. And so after, I left that meeting, I was just kind of down, frowning about it because we only have so many great things to offer, but we don't do a lot of great things to get them used. And so, and I just think about rural health, we're all rural here. You look at the national stage and any other kind of stage, even the state, and we're right below in the health and I probably have to go to see a doctor. And, uh, I talked to my wife and we are already a team, my wife and I are a team. Nothing I don't do, I don't consult her and she doesn't help me and I help her. And I implored her, even though she's coming close to the thing, she wants to retire, that if, uh, she wouldn't take over the Rural Health Clinic. And she looked at me kind of crazy, but I explained to her at the meeting and all the things that was going on and how many people that we could help. Because that's what we're about, trying to help our own community. We're not going off to stain the world's one body, yes. So I just wanted to make the announcement, she is the manager of the Bradley County Rural Health Clinic right now. And she's going along and redoing the mission statements and everything is. And the doctors on staff and the RNs and everybody else she's gonna get together because she wants, when you go down there for it, to feel like her family. I remember used to when you go to Dr. Whazins and Dr. Crowes and their work, it felt like a family when you went in and out. It felt like a feeling that you wanted them to go in it because you wanted them to help. So I want everybody possible to get the word out that that building south of the hospital is a rural health clinic. And you don't have to go to the emergency room, sometimes the emergency room costs, you can't afford those costs. But if you go down there, you may can afford those costs to be seen. And our kids need to be sawed by somebody with medical knowledge early on in life, even prenatal care, before they can grow up and have a chance and don't be suffering when they go to school. So I wrote just to say that that information on that questionnaire just didn't do us justice. We have way more things to be proud of if we just get together and work and produce a positive atmosphere around it. And I just wanted to implore everybody that let's get around our community because we got more than a whole lot of the communities have, but we just gotta work it. Thank you.
Okay, now I need a motion to pay the bills for July.
So moved.
Second. Motion in second to pay the bills for July. Any discussion? All those in favor, by show of hands? Unanimous. The meeting is set for September, the agenda meeting on the eighth at seven and second Monday is at twelve, five thirty for the, um... Council meeting, now I need a, a motion to adjourn.
I know, so we'll try.
Second.